Welcome to the City of West Miami. Today is Wednesday, July the 2nd, 2014, and welcome to our regular commission meeting. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you, please rise. Let's bow our heads and thank the Lord for the many blessings that we receive day in and day out. We ask the Lord to protect those that are ill, frail, those who basically put their lives on the line every day to protect and serve our community. We pray for world peace. We pray so that our soldiers can come back home safe and uninjured. We pray for leadership. We pray for our elected officials so that they can make the right decisions for the greater good of all of those whom they serve. And on this celebration of this country's independence, we thank the Lord for our many freedoms. And we ask this in your name, amen.
Thank you. Chief, for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Luciano Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondero Rodriguez. Commissioner Candida Blanca is excused this evening. Vice Mayor Juan Blanes. Mayor Eduardo Mujina.
President.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. At this point, I would like to welcome a couple of people that we have in the audience and very familiar. First of all, ladies first, Victoria Ferrer, running for county judge. We met, and one thing that is important to us, any friend of Gladys, it's our friend, our Judge Gladys. So, Victoria, can you come up to the podium and introduce yourself?
Thank you. My name is Victoria Ferrer. I'm running for county court judge, group 36. My number is 57. It's a great honor for me to be here, specifically with such beautiful people who really care about this community. This is a beautiful, beautiful building, very old building with a lot of heritage to it, and I know that everybody that is here cares very deeply about the heritage and about this community, and I thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
I think that the candidate has been short of talking about herself. I think that judges, the reason that we have judges is that we have the opportunity in this country to have experienced judges. So, I know she's sort of shy at talking about herself, but I would urge you to please state your qualifications.
Thank you. I just didn't know how much time I could take up. Well, like I said, my name is Victoria Ferrer. I was raised in Miami-Dade County my entire life. I was born in New York, but then we came over here since I was nine years old. I've been to all these schools that Miami has to offer, which are wonderful, wonderful schools. I graduated from FIU with a double bachelor's in political science and journalism and mass communication with a minor in advertising. Then as soon as I graduated, I obtained my real estate license, so I've been a Realtor for about 20 years. I went on to work in an advertising agency, Chrisman Porter and Bogowski, and I realized by working at the ad agency that what I really loved was arguing with the owners of the agency to state that I believe that certain things should be published, and they would say, "No, but you can't do that." And when I would prove them wrong, they insisted that I become an attorney. So I went into law school. I graduated from St. Thomas Law. I was on the dean's list, I book award recipient for property law, academic tutor, which I tutored as a 3-0, all the freshmen, and I got them through finals, which is a big accomplishment. Then after law school, I opened up my own law practice, and I did a little bit of probate real estate. I also worked for Judge Arthur Rothenberg in the probate court for about a year, which I learned to, I fell in love with probate. Then I wanted to hone in on my litigation skills, so I went to work for Gonzalez and Associates. I've been with Gonzalez and Associates for about six years. I graduated in 2005 from St. Thomas Law. In Gonzalez and Associates, we do personal injury, bodily injury, foreclosure defense, bankruptcy, all kinds of contract disputes, and we are a high-volume litigation firm. At Gonzalez and Associates, I obtained experience doing trials, hundreds, thousands of motions, depositions taking and defending, and I've always been interested in defending consumer rights. Therefore, the next natural step for me, and the greatest honor that an attorney can obtain, is to become judge. And that is why I have thrown in my hat to this judicial race, which elections are August 26th. And here we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. I also, actually, we have an old friend over here. We have Pedro Garcia that is running for property appraisal. Mr. Garcia, welcome to the City of West Miami once again.
Thank you. Thank you for giving the opportunity to be here. I'm the former Miami-Dade County Property Appraiser. I spent four years working as a property appraiser in Miami-Dade County after I was elected. My life is very simple. I've been married, next two weeks are going to be 55 years married with my only one wife, four daughters and 13 grandchildren. Out of this time, I spent 40 years as a Realtor and 38 years as a real estate appraiser. That's everything I've done in my life is establishing value on properties, and that's what I'm running for, to establish the right value of the properties in Miami-Dade County so the people can still making payments on the taxes and they don't lose their properties. What can I tell you about myself? I work very hard. I establish values, like I said before, for many, many times. I establish value. I have the license, the highest license in real estate appraisal. I'm a state certified general of real estate appraisal. I can do from a little house all the way to the white house. I can do any kind of appraisal, and that's what I did at the Miami-Dade County when I was there. I worked very hard to create the program where we start fighting the people that were taking advantage of committing fraud on Homestead assumptions. And let me tell you, we created a program that I used the last year I was elected. That was in 2012, and we lent $26 million on people that were taking advantage of fraud in Homestead. And that's what I want to finish. I want to finish that. I want to finish all the flow plans for all the properties in Miami-Dade County so you can go on the computer and take a look at your property. If anybody, any property you're going to buy, you want to see the property, also you're going to find the flow plan there. So I want to finish. The person that beat me on the last election, as everybody knows, that beat me with the absentee ballots. I won all the elections. I won the L election and the normal election, but the absentee ballots took me away for 2,500 absentee ballots after I got 102,000 votes. After that, he left. He's now the new lieutenant governor, and he spent one year as a property appraiser. When I was elected, I took the charge to be four years there, and I was the four year there. And I promise I'm going to do everything possible to be alive and finish my term if I'm elected, and I hope I will. The number I got today, there was a beautiful number, is 66, and I have the endorsement today of the ALF CIO, and that was really a great situation for me, and I really enjoyed. And thank you again for giving me the opportunity to be here with you.
You have Pepper's endorsement also, by the way. I have known this gentleman for over 60 years.
You're beginning to date yourself as your attorney.
60 years. He used to take me to school when I was a little boy. But anyway, I cannot say enough about Pedro. So I know that the citizens that are watching us look at Pedro, and they can see only experience. I don't know that there is any more. I mean, when you go out to physician, and you don't want to go to a carpenter. I mean, you want to go to someone specializing what you do. When you go to property appraiser, you need someone that knows about that, you know? So that's my two cents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, let me say that Pedro is the most experienced person in the county in appraising, let me tell you. Because I know him, not for 60 years like this old guy, but I know him for many years, and the respect that everybody have for him here is great. Congratulations, Pedro, for your life because you have been so honest and so good for the community that you deserve to go back to the position you are.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Mayor, I know that you have other things to do, so don't be shy if I have to leave.
By the way, I forget to tell you that I serve in the US Army, and I'm a veteran on the US Army.
Thank you for your service.
You didn't have to be there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you again. Good night.
Good night. At this time, I would like to take out of order item 11J.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And if you can read also to the record 11K?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11J on their new business request for resolution in support of Florida East Coast Industries by Mayor Mujina. And item 11K, resolution of the mayor and city commissioner of the City of West Miami in support of Florida East Coast Industries' construction of the 235-mile passenger railroad train from Miami to Orlando, providing for effective aid by mayor and city commissioner.
Thank you. Welcome to our city, but I also have to say welcome our old friend, Rolie Marante. So, coming in, oh, there he is.
Thank you. You ready for me?
Yes, we are ready for you.
Perfect. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Madam City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, and Madam Clerk. Thank you so much for hosting us tonight. I'm Ally Sewell, the Public Affairs Manager for the All Aboard Florida Project. It's, the parent company is Florida East Coast Industries, and we truly believe that this is the most exciting transportation project in the state of Florida. So we always like to start off our presentation with a bit of history. So when Henry Flagler built the Florida East Coast Railway in the late 1890s, the population of Florida was about 390,000, and Miami had 300. And fast forward to today, Miami has more than about 400,000 residents. So times have definitely changed since Henry Flagler built the Florida East Coast Railway from Jacksonville to Key West. So my company, Florida East Coast Industries, is leveraging that irreplaceable asset that Henry Flagler built, and we are re-establishing passenger rail on the existing Florida East Coast Railway between downtown Miami and Cocoa, and then we are building new rail between Cocoa and the Orlando International Airport. And we're doing that because Florida is soon to be the third-largest state with more than 19.5 million people, and we only continue to grow. So All Aboard Florida will connect Florida's key cities in new ways to spark new and social economic opportunities. So, oh, go back one second. So we will have four stations on the base of our system: downtown Miami, downtown Fort Lauderdale, downtown West Palm Beach, and then, as I mentioned, the Orlando International Airport. All right. So All Aboard Florida is also two unique businesses. The first is inner-city passenger rail that will connect Miami and Orlando in less than three hours. And then the second is the development of transit-oriented development, or real estate around our three South Florida stations, and that will be to the tune of about $4 to $4.5 million. So why are we doing this? More and more people are moving to city centers because they prefer to live in a work-live-play environment. Mayor Carlos Jimenez said a couple weeks ago, when we unveiled our Miami station plans, that in the early 2000s, Miami had about, downtown Miami had about 40,000 residents, and today it has more than 70,000. And if you go down there, there are lots of construction, cranes, and lots of crews, and we know that number will only continue to grow. And then more and more people are relying less on their cars and taking public transportation. So last year, the American Association of Public Transportation recorded the highest year of public transportation since the 1950s. So we know that All Aboard Florida will connect the cities, the state's most populated and visited cities. So more than 9 million people live along our rail corridor, and we know, like I said, that transit-oriented development creates livable and walkable environments. So the main, one of the main reasons we know that this project is viable and will be successful is because of our number-one industry, which is hospitality and tourism. So last year, Florida welcomed more than 95 million visitors. About 52 million of those visited Orlando, which is the nation's most visited city. And then South Florida is really the gateways to the Latin Americas, and it's much more becoming the gateways to the world. So by connecting those two city pairs, you have a very synergizing connectivity. So existing transportation options are unreliable, expensive, and inefficient. It only takes you to look out on I-95 to know that you're not going anywhere at 5 o'clock. And if it's raining, if it's raining, you're definitely not going anywhere anytime soon, and gas prices only continue to rise. So taking an airfare, you know that to travel between Miami and Orlando, it can really only take about less than an hour. But that doesn't account for getting to the airport early, getting through security, then waiting if you get through too early, or not having enough time to actually get through. And then if you're actually the first plane to take off or the last plane, you know, there could be that light that malfunctions, and then you're delayed on the tarmac for 30 minutes. It's happened to my colleagues and me several times. So what does our ridership look like? It's about a third, a third, a third. So it's a third business travelers who are traversing the corridor to go to a meeting, a lawyer that's going to downtown West Palm Beach for a case. It's a third everyone in this room who wants to travel to Orlando to take their kids up for a trip to the theme parks, or it's the folks in Orlando that are coming down to Miami to enjoy our beautiful beaches and the culture that we have to offer. And it's also a third tourist travel. So what is All Aboard Florida? It's quick, convenient, competitive, comfortable, connected, and current. So, backup. So by quick, like we mentioned, Miami to Orlando in less than three hours. We'll be doing that using high-powered diesel locomotives. So between Miami and West Palm Beach, we will go about 79 miles an hour. And then between West Palm Beach and Cocoa, we'll go 110. And then from Cocoa to the Orlando International Airport, we'll go about 125. And the speed limit on the beach line, which is that segment, is about 70. So if you're speeding and going 80, we're still going to be flying past you at 125 miles an hour. It's a great marketing tool. And then convenient, sorry. Keep it here for one second. I'm just going to go through. So convenient, we will have hourly departures starting in the early morning around 6:00 AM and going to the evening about 9:00 PM. And people ask, "Why is that?" Well, if you were in West Palm Beach for a lunch meeting and you wanted to come back to Miami, and your lunch meeting ran late by 30 minutes, and the next train didn't leave for three or four hours, you would never take our train again. You would rent a car and you'd say, "This is so inconvenient for me." But if you know that in 30 minutes, the next train is going to come, you can stay for a little bit longer at lunch, grab a paper, catch up at some work at the station while you wait for the next train to get there. We will also offer door-to-door service. So whether it's a bus, whether it's a van, whether it's a limo or a town car, the range of options is yours, but we know that not everyone lives within walking distance to our station. So how do you get them there? Either using public transportation or the services that we will offer. We will also be competitive. So while we have not released our pricing structure yet, we do know that we will be cheaper than airfare and comparable to driving. And we're also working with the major destinations along our corridor to co-market those ticket packages so that, you know, a family of two in West Palm Beach could buy a season, a season ticket pass to see the heat, and they could also buy a season ticket pass to ride All Aboard Florida on those games, and that way they wouldn't have to leave about two, two-and-a-half hours before that game actually started. And then comfortable, so all of our seats will be as big or bigger than that of a first-class seat in an airplane. And we're also tailoring our train cars to our ridership. So I mentioned, it's about, you know, there's a lot of family travelers, a lot of tourists. So you can imagine that a business traveler who's traveling to Orlando or Miami for work and trying to make a conference call or get work done probably doesn't want to be bothered by the family of four that's playing games. So we'll have like a play car, and then we'll have a quiet car so that you can actually choose your seating options and be more comfortable in your environment. And then connected, so since we own the rail corridor, we're able to establish and develop a very strong Wi-Fi system, so you'll be able to stream movies, catch up on a show. If you're a student traveling home, catch up on some online classes, which is a big plus because you cannot do that in your car. And then we're current. So train travel continues to be increasingly popular throughout the United States and the world, and we know that by offering this type of service that people will be very interested in it. And we're also going green. So our service is expected to remove about 3 million vehicles from Florida's roadways each year. Our locomotives, as I mentioned, are also being custom-developed, so they will meet the highest emission standards set by the Federal Railroad Administration in 2015. So they will use clean diesel. So transit-oriented development, I'm going to walk you all through our station locations starting in Orlando. I'm going to turn this so I can, go ahead. All right. So our station in Orlando will be located at the future intermodal facility. So as I mentioned earlier, we are going to traverse the beach line or the State Road 528 corridor to the west as we come off of the FEC. Then we will thread the needle through the north terminal and be located at the intermodal facility. So this intermodal facility has been on the airport's books for years. It was actually the station where the Tampa to Orlando high-speed rail was going to dock at the airport. So it will eventually house four different kinds of rail. So Sunrail, which is Central Florida's commuter rail system, very similar to Tri-Rail down in South Florida, an automated people mover that will connect it to the north terminal. And then they're looking at a Maglove system that will connect it out to the convention center. So just imagine traveling, getting on our station in downtown Miami, in less than three hours, you're in Orlando, and then you would take Sunrail to downtown Orlando or to Altamont Springs or to Winter Park, and you would be there in less than 20 to 30 minutes, all without using your car. So this is actually a rendering of what the intermodal facility will look like. So it is the airport's building. We are paying rent to actually be located there. So like I also said, there will be a rental car facility. It's kind of like the MEC down here. It'll be Central Florida's transportation hub. So then in South Florida, our most northern station is located in downtown West Palm Beach. So for those of you who are familiar with the area, it's located between Detoura and Avirnia and just west of Quadril. The Clemata Street District, which is like the arts and entertainment street and government center, is to the north. And then the Performing Arts Center, City Place, and the convention center is located to the south. So that area in the middle has actually been underdeveloped for years, and so after we announced where our station was located, we've already seen almost all of the parcels around it being purchased and plans to develop around our station. So in Fort Lauderdale, we will be located just north of Broward Boulevard. For those of you who are familiar with downtown Fort Lauderdale, it's also just to the west of the county's bus facility, which is located right downtown. So this area is also very underutilized, very underdeveloped. So by purchasing here, we were able to pick up the land that you see on the screen and then additional parcels so that we can later develop it. And there's a lot of activity that we're already starting to see in an area called Flagler Village Civic Association and the Progresso Village Civic Association as they work to develop this northern edge of downtown. And then in Miami, this is really our grand central station. So the long, thin red line is, or red box, is the Nine Acre Parcel. That was the original site of Henry Flagler Station in downtown Miami. It's been in the company for more than 100 years. And then the red square just to the west of the Overtown Transit Village is a two-acre parcel that we are purchasing from the CRA at the City of Miami. We went through an RFP process, and so that development will also be part of our station. A couple weeks ago, we announced what the renderings would look like. So this is the ultimate master plan for our downtown Miami station. It's about 3 million square feet. It's an elevated station, so just imagine the rail will start to rise as it comes out from I-395, and it will enter the station about 50 feet in the air, so it'll be higher than metro mover. But we are all about connectivity, so there are two stations, two metro mover stations and two metro mover and two metro rail stations in our facility. So we will also be like an intermodal hub for downtown Miami. And this is a view of what it would look like from the ground floor looking north. So you can see by elevating the rail, we are able to activate the ground floor and create a very pedestrian and walkable environment by putting retail and really bringing people to the area. Because I'm sure that at 5 o'clock or right now, if any of us went out there, there would probably be no one there, but this area will really become a destination unto itself and a new part of downtown Miami. So in closing, All Aboard Florida will really revitalize the state. We believe that it will, it'll be a catalyst for regional prosperity. It'll attract new business residents and visitors, and it'll link people and cultures. There are also significant economic opportunities. So our private investment of more than $1.5 billion for the rail infrastructure, coupled with almost a billion more for the transit-oriented development, will create about $6.4 billion in economic impact and add $3.5 billion in GDP over the next, well, 2021. And for rail line construction, which is scheduled to take place between mid-2014 and mid-2016, we will create more than 10,000 jobs per year on average. And so I mentioned rail line construction. So we are scheduled to start construction within the next several months. It will be imminent, and then our service will be operational by the end of 2016. So with that, I'll welcome any questions, and I thank you again for the opportunity to present.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Now, is the project already approved?
So the Miami to West Palm Beach segment received a finding of no significant impact for an environmental assessment that was conducted, so that is why we are starting construction on that portion. The West Palm Beach to Orlando portion is going through what's called an environmental impact statement. So once that process is completed, we can start construction north of West Palm Beach.
But from here to West Palm is already?
It's, we received approval from the Federal Railroad Administration, correct.
It's about time that Florida Railroad do something great here. We have the money for that.
We agree.
And when you start buildings, these beautiful buildings, when to start?
When we start building that. So the station, the actual station itself, is part of the Phase 1 development. The TOD will really be market-driven, so we have a whole team that's out, you know, looking at people that want to relocate companies here that could locate in our towers, businesses that want to move, you know, residences that need to be built, hospitality options. So, you know, market-driven when we have the...
It's going to be great, I tell you.
Yes, we agree.
It's going to be great.
We agree. That is the ultimate vision that could be viewed as early as 2021.
Very good, very good. Excellent.
Amazing. I mean, I can, I can visualize it very well, and I mean, it's like, the words are, "The future is here."
The future is here. And the future is here, I, this is the point we kind of gloss over the most, but this project is not being done with any state or federal grants or operating subsidies. So this is a privately funded project. We're leveraging the irreplaceable asset that Henry Flagler developed, and that's really why we're able to do so.
Any other comments? Vice Mayor?
I'm speechless.
Yes, you look speechless.
It's great. I've never heard of this. I don't know where I'm in.
That was in the newspaper a month ago, right?
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
I haven't been keeping up with reading the papers.
I tell you, it's a great thing.
Yeah, this is wonderful.
And I'll give you a teaser.
I have my support.
Great. We, very soon, we will also...
A great one, by the way.
Perfect. We'll be releasing our renderings for the Fort... We'll be releasing our renderings for the Fort Lauderdale and the West Palm Beach stations. So, we'll make sure that we send it to everyone here, so that you can keep updated with our progress.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming and showing our people, because not only us, you know, the...
Of course.
The community is watching the TV.
Of course, everyone in Miami-Dade is a potential user, and will definitely benefit from the economic benefits that this project will create. We agree.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, with your permission, we are streaming live, and anybody has access to the City of West Miami website is looking at this. Plus, we have the capability of archiving every commission meeting. And so, anyone from anywhere with access to our website will be able to access this information.
Great. Thank you very much.
I just have one comment. I can't wait, take my grandchildren to Disney on your train.
We can't wait either. Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Excuse me, do you like a cookie? She brought delicious cookies tonight. Rhonda's cookies.
She brought some delicious cookies.
No, thank you. Trying to be good.
Well... After you've seen the presentation, well, the items on the agenda, that's why, you know, now you understand why I requested a resolution in support of the Florida East Coast industry. And also, we have item K. So, do we need a motion on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we need a vote.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Next item, I would like to take, out of order, item L. Please.
L and M.
That is correct.
Is related to the same topic. Okay. Item 11L, this is a request for mitigation of court enforcement fines for property located at 1960 Southwest 61st Court. This is by the city attorney, Jose Villalobos. And if you allow me, I'll read the resolution also, Mr. Mayor.
Please do.
Item M, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to a set mitigation settlement in the amount of, which is, will be discussed by you, for a property located at 1960 Southwest 61st Court as a result of court enforcement liens placed against the property under City of West Miami Court Enforcement Complaint 1010018 and Complaint 1010019, providing for satisfaction of lien and payment of mitigation no later than August 15, 2014, providing for effective date by mayor and city commission.
Thank you. Mrs. Attorney?
Actually, I will call Mr. Penna about this.
Mr. Penna?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. This property has been abandoned by the bank for a long time now, for over two years.
Excuse me, is your mic on?
Yes, I'm sorry. Been abandoned by the bank for over two years, and now, finally, they're ready to transfer the property to a property owner that's interested in fixing it up and repairing it. The violations that we cited, over time, have accumulated to over $53,000. One is for the condition of the property, which is overgrown outrageously. And the other one is for building nuisance, which is the condition of the property because of termite damage, and weather, and everything else that occurs to property over time. So, nothing has been fixed up to this point. The applicant is here to mitigate that cost, and it's up to you all to decide anywhere between the 10% to 15% that we usually do on any of these mitigations.
The amount is, what's the amount?
$53,499.70 for the two violations. Includes the two violations, the amount of the liens, the penalty and recording fees. And obviously, there is a re-lien fee that must be paid to release the lien if there's a mitigation in the case.
Thank you. Mrs. Attorney, do you have anything else to add?
No, I don't. We'd like to hear from the applicant.
Okay.
I have a question for Mr. Penna.
Go ahead.
Are there any other, anything else due to us, as far as garbage fees?
Yeah, there's garbage and water fees that are due from year to year, and they've been leaned off, so, but that's...
Is that aside from the $53,000?
That's aside from the $53,000.
How much is it?
Correct.
$2,800, in garbage and water.
$2,000, okay.
Correct.
$2,000?
$832.
$832.05.
That doesn't get mitigated.
Right. There's a water bill that's $1,100, and the rest is garbage fees.
The applicant has been advised that the utilities, the amounts due for utilities are non-mitigatable, and it would be over and above any amounts that you deem appropriate while deliberating this mitigation.
Okay. Can you come up and state your name and address for the record, please?
Okay, good evening to all of you.
Can you get closer to the microphone?
Good evening to all of you. The thing is that I'm very tall, that's the problem. My name is Maggie Alvarez. I'm actually a friend of the new possible owner of the property, Mr. Ricardo Garcia. He's the actual owner. This property is a short sale. We've been working on the short sale for over a year. Finally, the bank has approved the sale, and they have approved the sale at about $175,000, which is above the value, if we consider the property has been a nuisance, and it's totally deteriorated, and it's gonna take more than $40,000 to $50,000 to bring it up to code. It happens that the seller and the owner share a very common last name, Garcia. Mr. Cosme Garcia is purchasing the property if we can come to a resolution today. The bank has accepted $175. He's very aware of the fact that the garbage and the water has to be paid separately. But, taking in consideration that the bank will not take anything less than $175, taking also in consideration of the liens and the code violation, and also the amount of money that it's gonna be, that it's gonna take to bring the property to a good standing, we are asking, if possible, and pleading to you, if the only way Mr. Garcia, the new possible buyer, which is buying it as his homestead, will be able to buy the property and bring it to what it should be, it would be about $3,000. I know it's way below of what you guys normally do, but that is why we're here pleading. The original owner of the property had cancer, and that was the reason why he lost his job. His wife, it's a young couple. His wife had to work and support the family, and they had to neglect the property, because with whatever she was making, it was not enough. And it got to a point that they even had to abandon the property. So, that's, we're here to plead for your, whatever you can do for us. If not, and we would be closing on the 8th of this month, if you accept what we're asking you to.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me make a record, Mr. Mayor. You're not the legal representative, you're acting as a... Excuse me, let me finish for the record, okay? You're not a legal representative, you're actually acting as an interpreter.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Okay. Any other comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Penna, are any of the violations structural in nature?
Yes, the nuisance part is structural. There's a considerable termite damage to the property.
And another question, if I may, Mr. Mayor, is how long has this property been sitting in somewhat of a state of disrepair?
Oh, we would have to go back to our record, but over two years.
Over two years.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Mr. Penna, how much have we, do you think that we have invested in mitigating the code?
Countless hours.
The code enforcement.
Countless hours notifying the bank, trying to get the bank out there to clean it up, secure it. It became, they broke into it, so there was an open building for a while. We had to get police involved to get people out of there, close it back up, so, it's been considerable.
If I may, the $3,000, as I understand, and I understand the situation, will not cover the administrative expenses in this case.
Madam Manager, what do you think the administrative expenses are?
Each case should be, again, I go back to each case, weighed on its own merits.
That's what we're trying to ascertain.
And so, I don't believe that the city should accept anything, and I had this conversation with the title company agent, anything under $5,500, so that we can at least recoup the time spent on the file, and the resources spent by the city, the mailing of the notices, the code enforcement clerk, the code enforcement board, the attorney's time involved in the file. There's obviously expenses on the side of the city. So, you know, in being very conservative in this case, and that's why I asked how long this property has been in a state of disrepair. We have to think about the neighborhood. This deteriorates, the condition of the property also deteriorates the general neighborhood. And so, that being said, I don't think, I think the city will lose if the settlement offer made by the applicant, or on behalf of the applicant, is mitigated at $3,000. And I know, this is not pleasant news. Our goal is that these properties are turned over, that a good owner gets in there and becomes a good resident of the city, and obviously takes care of his or her property. But, again, we need to weigh the merits of each case.
Madam, I have a question for you.
Yeah, yes.
Did you say that the owner, I mean, the prospective buyer, Mr.?
Yeah, Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Garcia? It's gonna be his homestead?
It's gonna be his home.
He's planning on living there?
Yes, he's planning on living the property.
He's not gonna fix this up and try to sell it?
That's not, that's not what we were, we have been informed. It is his intention to use the house as his homestead. One thing that I would like to say is that, if he's not able to purchase this particular property, what is gonna happen? This is not a bank-owned, this is not an REO. This is a short sale. What's gonna happen is, he's gonna walk away. We're gonna have to try to find another buyer, and then the property is gonna continue to be empty and abandoned for all this time. And if it goes into foreclosure, normally, the way things are happening right now, it takes between six months to a year before the bank actually sells the property. So, I think that if we take in consideration the fact that he's willing, he's gonna be using it as his homestead. I know it's a loss to the city. I don't want the city to look bad. I actually live in 58th and 80th, which is, I'm a neighbor, I'm an unincorporated day county, and anything that happens in West Miami affects me directly. So, if we could consider that for them, and for him, I think the city will benefit by accepting that.
And in spite of the fact that the house is in the state that it is, says the bank will not take less than $175?
The banks are being very stubborn lately, and if we don't close by the 8th, they're gonna increase the actual asking price for the closing.
You say on the 8th of this month?
Yes. They will increase the price. I can't tell you, because they're not letting us know, but they told us, we were informed by the bank.
I don't think that we have time to do all of this in seven days. I mean, before the 8th of this month, of July?
Yes.
If I may, we have in our package, it says that the closing must take place on before July 22nd.
No, that is when the letter expires. But, if we don't close by the 8th, because of the new regulations that these servicing companies have done, they will prorate, and they will increase the price.
Excuse me, you said that it was a short sale, so a short sale, it's actually from the bank to your client, to Mr. Garcia?
The owner of the property is trying to negotiate with the bank.
With the bank?
They will take that letter. Right now, it's the bank, the servicing company that is in charge of it. Hold on, let me get my glasses on, because... Okay, it's called SPS, but it stands for, let me find it.
Select Portofino Servicing.
Yes, those are the owners of the property. And Nation Star, because the property has two different mortgages.
Correction, Select Portfolio Servicing, I'm sorry. It's Select Portfolio.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Let me speak in Spanish. You're the seller, right?
We need to translate them.
No, no, I said we need to translate, if you're gonna speak in Spanish.
You're the seller.
Commissioner, give me one second.
You have to ask the question in English, and they will translate. You cannot translate it.
Right.
Okay. You're the seller.
Are you?
No, the other way around.
You have to speak English, and they translate.
But, we may speak Spanish in day county.
Okay, go ahead.
By lingual county. Of course.
I'm just counseling.
No, we're counseling, but this is by a lingual county years ago. We talk Spanish here many times, then you translate in English if you want for the record. I like to talk to in Spanish, and then you translate in English, if you want for the record. You're the seller.
Are you the buyer?
You understand what the manager said?
Did you understand the statement by the manager?
You understand, right?
I understand a little bit.
You know, the minimum that you can accept is $5,500.
Do you understand that the minimum that the manager stated, that the city should be compensated, is $5,500?
It's $5,500, the minimum that you can accept.
The thing is, it's not just the $5,500, the water bill is also part of it.
It's not only the $5,500, it's the water bills and the other amounts due.
What I thought was in the $5,500?
No, that's not included. The utilities are separate and apart. That is correct.
So, it would be about $8,000?
That is correct.
Okay.
It would be a little bit over $8,000.
You understand, it's about $8,000 in total, more or less? I think it's $2,800, the water and sewer. In reality, it's a lot for me, because...
You can't go lower than $8,000.
No, I can't, because I'm paying the price that's set for the purchase of the property, plus I have to invest to make repairs. It's pretty abandoned.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
And if I may pose it to the applicant, or the representative, or maybe some guidance by the city attorney, will the bank agree to assume some responsibility by paying the utility bills that were not incurred by you?
The bank at this point is not accepting to do anything like that.
Now, we can impose a lien, and the bank has to pay, okay? It's just that, you see, the water services are superior in dignity to any mortgages. So, we can impose a lien, and the bank has to pay. So, first of all, I don't know whether the bank interest is prior to ours, but if we want to force the issue, they would have to pay the $53,499.70, plus the water bill, if we're superior in interest. In other words, if we file this before the bank, did we, Mr. Penna? So, as it stands right now, we could foreclose on the bank as well.
If I may, for the record, I spoke to Annie Coronel, and she's the short sale negotiator specialist for Venetian Title. I spoke to her last week before the matter came to the agenda. And at that time, if I misunderstood, maybe I did, but it seemed to me that it was clear, in our conversation, that the bank would be willing to assume some of the responsibilities, obviously, to relieve the owner, to deal with the issue of the mitigation.
The last thing that I was informed by Annie Coronel and by Mr. Osme Garcia, is that they were not that, their final is that, and the only thing that they added was that if we don't close by the 8th, they will increase the price.
Clarify for me, Madam Manager.
Can I?
I'm sorry.
I got the Vice Mayor as being...
Oh, no.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna...
they will increase the price.
Clarify for me, Madam Manager.
Can I?
I'm sorry.
I got the Vice Mayor's being.
Oh, no.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna come up with a suggestive solution, but you go.
Just a clarification. You were under the impression that the bank would assume a portion of the 53? Or, I'm sorry.
A portion being either the utilities?
Uh-huh.
Or a portion of the mitigation? That's based on my conversation.
They may assume to take responsibility for the $2,800 and change?
Absolutely, and basically it was something that she advised she would take back to the bank to try to negotiate it, and it's something that would help the buyer, I think, in this case.
It would alleviate the buyer from having to pay that?
Some of it, some of it. What the amounts were, we didn't get into that, but she was going, as a matter of fact, she advised me that she would be here this evening, so.
She wasn't able to make it, and she asked me to be with Mr. Osmel. He's an acquaintance of mine, and asked me to translate. I just finished talking to her before we even came up, and she says that what she had asked me and what she had told me, that those were the guidelines that we had today to deal with.
I mean, I spoke to her last Thursday, and I believe I may have spoken to her on Friday as well.
What I'm telling you is what I was informed before coming over, the bank is not paying any of the water liens or the garbage liens or any of the code enforcement liens or violations, they're not. It would be the buyer's responsibility, that's what the bank has said.
Could we pass on this item? Mr. Penna, we just went downstairs to get the file.
Could we defer it for a couple of minutes and come back to it, please?
Yes, let's, let's take a recess on this item, and we'll come back to it. We're gonna take another item and we'll come back to it.
Thank you.
Okay? In this case, I also would like to take out of order, if you give me a second, item 11G.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Can you read it into the record, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item F is related to the topic also, so I'll read both items. Item 11F is a report by the Office of the City Manager in reference to Greater Miami Catering Service Contract and Recommendation to Extend the Contract for Senior Meal Service, Congregate, and Home Delivered Meals by the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, I would like to thank John Almo for being here this evening. As you know, we've had a longstanding relationship with Greater Miami. They have partnered with the city on numerous occasions, not only with our senior meal program, but with every event held by the city. We have the option to renew the contract without going to the RFP process through September 30th, 2015. They have expressed in their letter that they would like to continue serving the Congregate Meal Program and the Home Delivered Meal Service. They have included in their proposal a 2.5% based on the CPI food index indicators that was published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics for the month of May 2014. That being said, we highly recommend that we be allowed to actually extend this contract for another year, which actually it starts October 1st, 2014, through September 30th, 2015. And they're bound by the same guidelines. They have to work strictly with the dietitian. They have to meet all of the requirements of the Department of Elder Affairs from the state of Florida and work under the strict guidelines of the Alliance for Aging. If you have any questions, the paperwork is in your packet. And again, we have, the reason why this is before you this evening is this is a matter for the budget. And because the budget is going to be presented at the next meeting, all the information that affects us financially, one way or the other, has to be contemplated. So if we don't have an agreement, then we don't have a concrete number to provide you with our best estimates for next year. So again, Greater Miami is represented by John, and we have been clients of Greater Miami for about 20 years now, give or take. And any issue with the senior citizens meal program, we resolve it. If there's tweaking in the menus and the menu selections and the food quantity, food quality, food presentations, the issue of containers, every issue that we have had, the delivery times and everything, every issue that has been addressed. So our recommendation to you is that we authorize the extension of this contract for an additional year.
Vice Mayor?
I just want to say that John and his company, they've been more to us than providing a service. They've been a real partner.
Absolutely.
Through the years, and I've talked to a lot of residents that receive these meals, and you know, they're all very, very happy, you know, with the service and the meals. I've never heard anything bad said about the service and about the meals. So I think that we need to heed to the city manager's advice and extend the contract.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I make a motion.
Second.
We should read the item first, the resolution.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Before you read the resolution, if you want to hear from John Almo, he's here representing Greater Miami. John, if you could introduce, reintroduce yourself to the commission. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Almo, Greater Miami Caterers, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Anything you'd like to ask me, I'd be happy to respond. I'm a little taller than she was. We feel what, from what we presented, it's just a numerical thing as far as what we've offered, as far as the increase. We operated for the first two years at a fixed price. The Alliance only allows contract terms of three years, so next year will be a required year to go to bid for the '15, '16 fiscal period. The CPI report, as she indicated, was 2.5 for the, so it actually only averages out to like a 1.25 for the two years available. One of the things that changed a lot in the marketplace is how much the Alliance for Aging is pushing all the vendors that operate under funding that comes out of the Alliance to be compliant with their requirements. The standards were always there, but now they are, they're like under a super enforcement of everything. It's very strict. The guidelines were always strict, and now they don't let anybody get away with anything. And one of the things that we had to do, we were the first, and I still think we might be the only ones in the marketplace, we spent per vehicle $900 per every homebound delivery vehicle to put in electrical converters into the vehicles so that we can put plug-in heaters so that all the homebound meals are under a constant temperature, rather than the way that we really operated, everybody has and most still do. They just put it in some kind of a thermal container, and what occurs? We used to use small containers so that each time you take a meal out, you know, you lose a little bit, but that last meal has to be just as hot as the first meal does. With these new containers, they have a heating element inside the door. You open the door, you take the meal out, you close it, and everything stays at constant temperature. So every monitoring that we've had by the Alliance over the last year, we've been passing with flying colors. And let me tell you, there's multiple vendors that have gone out of, just quit doing this because they couldn't get up to specs to meet the inspection requirements. Because they're literally going out to like, they don't tell us, they'll go out to a client's home and sit there and wait for the delivery to come, and then they go, they inspect it at the door, and then they go out to the vehicle and inspect the vehicle too. So we, there's multiple vendors that are on probation right now because they couldn't do it, and they keep, they give them multiple attempts to come up to speed. But we've been passing all the inspections on the initial event, and so.
Well, with that, hold on a second, I gotta say this. I mean, we appreciate your service, and now after what you just said, we appreciate even more. I mean, it's incredible. Go ahead.
What John just said reflects the comments that I hear.
Yes.
From the public. I mean, I've never heard anything bad about these meals, and I know a lot of elderly people out there that receive these meals, and you know, they have nothing but praise for the service and for the meals. So you know, I know that this is something that is a no-brainer, that we should just go ahead and vote on it.
Second.
Okay.
That's good enough, second.
Can you call the vote, please?
Should I read the resolution first?
Yes, you can read the resolution.
Item 11G, Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the City Manager to execute an extension to the contract between the City of West Miami and Greater Miami Caterers Inc. Service commencing October 1st, 2014 through September 30th, 2015, providing for a 2.5% as reported by the CPI index increase to the prices of the Congregate from $2.75 to $2.80 per meal, and the home-delivered meals from $3.57 to $3.66 per meal, providing for inclusion in the 2014-15 city budget, providing for severity ability, and providing for effective date by mayor and city commission. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Blanes, a second by Commissioner Suarez. And on the vote, Commissioner Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
4-0, item passes.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll get with you all tomorrow on the signature for the contract.
Thank you.
Okay, for the time being, can we go back? Because we've been kind of, unless you, we can take another item, you suggested another item out of order. I would like to go back to the origin of the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Going back to the original order of the agenda, next item will be item four. It's a presentation of minutes for approval for June 18, 2014 Charter Review Board Meeting, June 18, 2014 Regular Commission Meeting, and June 25 Charter Review Board Meetings. I would like to request a deferral of the June 18 Regular City Commission Meeting because the times have been a little bit hectic recently, and I didn't have time to generate the whole minutes in its entirety. So I would like to request the June 18 Regular City Commission Meeting minutes to defer it. And it's up to your consideration to approve the June 18 Charter Review Board Meeting and the June 25 Charter Review Meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor, we reviewed those in the charter review and we approved them.
Right.
I motion to approve June 18 Charter Review and June 25 Charter Review Meeting Minutes.
Okay. I need a second. Okay, hold on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Approved. Can we go to the next item, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item five, the report of the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And late this evening, I included a report in the packet that you have before you this evening. A couple of things we need to report on. We have pleasantly, we were presently surprised, Mr. Roberto Ruano, our grants writer, informed us that the city had been awarded a grant by an entity by the name of Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. They have grant programs for public safety. Chief, very quickly, can you describe exactly what the $10,309.83 will buy for the city for our officers?
Good evening. We have been looking to replace our defibrillators, our AEDs. That, the ones we have are like seven or eight years old that we've tried to get them repaired, and the parts are just not available, plus they're outdated. I'm sure Vice Mayor Blanes knows all the new ones that are out there. And Firehouse, that's what they do. They deal primarily with fire departments for grants, but they also do public safety in general. And we were able to, through the grant writer, obtain a grant for them to get us, I believe it's four.
It's five.
Five, all of the accessories, the parts, the infant pads, because they all carry different pads. So we're very happy to, we'll be able to replace them all. And as a matter of fact, instead of having three, we're down to two now because one we can't replace, so there'll be more on the road at the same time.
So this is excellent. Chief, I'll get with you regarding all the requirements that we need to meet. The next item is a FERDAP grant, and I haven't, I apologize. Vice Mayor, I didn't get a chance to talk to you today about this. It was very hectic. However, the FERDAP grant announcement, which you are very familiar with, was published today. The window of application for FERDAP for this coming year, meaning for the year that starts, the state year that starts July 1st, 2015, this window of application closes on September 30th, 2014. In the coming days, I will be meeting with Chairman Blanes from the park regarding some thoughts for an application for the funding for the project that may intertwine with an expression of interest on a program by another member of the city commission. And while I will be meeting with you, let the record reflect that we'll be done independent of each other. We have discussed with the grant writer an opportunity for an application. However, because we have to go through the scoring process, we have to make sure that our project will score highly on the list of priorities. All FERDAP projects are subject to scoring, very strict scoring guidelines. I also need to bring Mr. Penna into the conversation as Mr. Jim Geswicki, who is the park director. So at some point, we gotta have a meeting of the mind. But it basically encompasses a wellness center. So in the coming days, I will be meeting with the chairman, with the mayor, obviously, with all the commissioners, and with Commissioner Rodriguez to try to explore this a little bit further.
I was outside, so I don't know if you had the chance to tell them, we have that part of, something like that in the comp plan as far as.
Exactly.
Enlarging the existing weight room into a better facility.
Right, so we need to look, first of all, that the application is the most important document that we need to focus on in the next day or two, and look at the criteria for the funding, because it gives you the criteria for the funding. And so once we have that, then we're gonna come to the park chairman, the commissioner, who has some thoughts on developing a program, and obviously the mayor and city commissioners, because we're talking about big dollars here and some commitments. So that'll come to you on July 16th with a recommendation from staff, and obviously we need to bring in the park director and the public works director into the mix as well. So we'll come back to you, and I haven't forgotten, but the coming days are gonna be kind of hectic with all the budget preparations. Summer camp is the next item in my report. We continue to see more enrollments at the recreation center. We are average, well, we averaged over 200 attendees per week the first three weeks. It's tapered off a little bit this week. We're probably at about 175, 180, and that's because we have the Fourth of July and some people take off on vacation. We will be revisiting with you in the coming meetings some rate issues that will have to be discussed and incorporated as those will also help shape up the budget for 2014, 2015. And those are after-school rates and the 2015 summer camp rates. The city budgets, the intent from our office is to deliver the preliminary budget along with the manager's message and all the exhibits no later than Friday, July 11th, 2014, the end of the business day. We're still gathering exhibits and working on the manager's memorandum addressing the preliminary budget. We will attempt to meet with all the commissioners again individually prior to the submittal of the budget next week. So please bear with me, it's getting quite hectic. The last item in my report is the West Miami Police Department. Chief, if you want to talk a little bit, very briefly about this one, it involves one of your officers and an award to the city of West Miami, and I think it would be fitting for the chief to present you with the good news.
And I just received a text from the captain that they just gave Officer Bello the award right now. The dinner started at like 8:00 or 8:30.
That, no, that's another, the other award.
Oh, you're talking Officer Fernandez?
Yes.
We participate annually in the Department of Transportation, has a traffic challenge in which they gather statistics, traffic tickets, the number of reduction in vehicle crashes, as well as seat belt enforcement and so forth. And we compete against municipalities with officers of the same or similar size. And this year, we were selected and we received a second place. And this year, we were selected, and we received a second place for departments of our size, and that, with that, we received a $12,000 credit to purchase traffic-related equipment and vehicle equipment and so forth on the DOT website. It reflects on all the, all the offices in the department, because it takes into account their traffic enforcement duties and the efforts they do. However, it was Officer Fernandez, Frank Fernandez, our traffic officer, who coordinated the whole thing, attended the meeting, and was presented with the award. Excuse me. They also hand out like a dozen keys to, for all the departments that win first or second place, to try to open vehicles, they give away two fully-equipped police vehicles. Frank told me he tried really hard to get that key to start, but unfortunately, it didn't, but nonetheless, we will hopefully be back there again next year, and we're proud of the accomplishment of all our officers, and Officer Fernandez in particular.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
That concludes my written report.
Thank you.
Okay, next item?
Item six is a report of the City Attorney. He's stepped outside, if you would like to.
Can we go back to that, yeah, let's go to item seven?
Item seven is a report of the City Engineers. No report this evening. Item eight, the committee reports, the report of the mayor.
Well, believe it or not, the Fourth of July, I mean, what am I saying, Independence Day is right here. You're all invited, it will be this coming Friday, and the time is?
4:30, the doors will be open.
Uh, we'll have food, we have fired work, and a lot of work for the police department, and a lot of fun for the people attending. Anything that you want to add in the report? Okay, next item?
Item nine is the cities and presentations. Nobody has registered with my office to present before the commission.
Next item, please?
Item 10, under unfinished business. Item 10A, this is a report by the Office of Director of Public Works in reference to cost estimate for city entrances to be funded by input fees by the Director of Public Works, and I believe the Director of Public Works. Oh, I thought you were, you were outside.
May we request a deferral until the next meeting on this item? We need to sit down and actually structure the cost for the entrance signs that were presented in concept during the last commission meeting.
Okay, item deferred?
Until July 16th.
July 16th.
Okay, next item?
Item 11, on the new business agenda. Item 11A, resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute interdepartmental transfers before the end of the fiscal year, September 30, 2014, as prescribed by Charter, Section 510, titled Transfer of Funds Between Departments by Mayor and City Commission.
Madam Manager?
Uh, very simple, this is a resolution that comes to you every year, three months before the end of the fiscal year, asking you to authorize us to make the necessary transfers, so that within the various funds of the city, and this requires commission approval. This is a housekeeping mechanism, if you want to call it that, that takes place prior to the entrance of the auditors, and it's.
Okay, are you done, Madam Manager?
Yes, unless you have any questions.
This is a customary thing, I make a motion.
Okay, all right. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
4-0, item passes.
Okay, next item, item B.
Item B is the selection of public hearings dates for the 2014-15 city budgets by City Manager.
Thank you, and looking at the TRIM calendar, Mr. Mayor, which is the document that is published by the Department of Revenue, and it is the tool that guides our budget, our legal budget requirements. We are required by law to publish, advertise, and hold public hearings on the city budgets. We've given you the next three months, actually, starting with July 1. There's a strict requirement that the city cannot hold the budget hearings the same day that the school board or the Board of County Commissioners will hold theirs. Therefore, we are proposing that, to meet the days that are set by the state within those windows, and so that we can meet the legal ads that we must advertise for, which is the submittal of the ads to the Miami Herald, we are proposing to you that you consider, and the first meeting, the tentative budget hearing would be September 2nd, which is the day after Labor Day, at 7:30 PM. It falls on a Tuesday. We recognize that you have a meeting on Wednesday, but we cannot have the public, the tentative budget hearing, because the school board has theirs, and so that would be in direct conflict with TRIM, then.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Yes.
I might have a conflict with that date.
You do?
Yes.
Okay.
And unfortunately, I believe I will be out of the country. This is, that sounds like deja vu. It sounds like deja vu. Is there any other date? I know it's sometime between the end of August and beginning of September.
It's gotta be in September. Your two public hearings must be, because we have to allow, by August 4th, we need to let the county know what the tentative mileage rate is. Then they have so many days to send out the notice of proposed taxes. Then we get into the window of the 65 to the 80 days that TRIM provides for. The problem is, Wednesday, you have a Miami day, you have the De County School Board budget, so that's absolutely not a possibility for us. Thursday, you have the first hearing of the county budget, which is absolutely and strictly off-limits for us to have a meeting on that date. The next alternative would be to have the meeting on Friday, September 5. All meetings of the budget must be held after 5:01 PM, they cannot be held during the day, because obviously, they're public hearings, and they're aimed at inviting public participation. We have, in order for us to meet the ad deadlines, which is Sunday, the ad for, before the final budget hearing must appear in the Miami Herald on Sunday, September 14. In order to meet that deadline, we need to submit the ads to the paper on Monday, September 8. And any change that occurs between the tentative budget hearing and anything that you wish to incorporate that I have not addressed, or that is not included in the budget, and these are things that come up during the month of August and early September, we need some leeway in terms of being able to physically work on the changes to the budget. So, Friday may not even be an option, Mr. Mayor.
Unfortunately, I was looking at my calendar, I ran out of battery. Is I having one of those days?
I attached.
I was going by my memory, yeah. Okay, let's move on, let's, let's talk about the other dates. I don't have an answer.
Friday the 5th?
Madam Manager, you just said that Friday the 5th wouldn't work.
I mean, it won't work, because then you have a weekend, I don't know what to say.
Mr. Mayor, the worst comes to worst, I'll take yours. See, the worst comes to worst, I'll take yours.
Yeah, no, it's the first, it's the first meeting, I mean.
It's a tentative budget, budget.
All right.
Um, I know that some cities use the Miami Daily Business Review for publications. The problem that we have, again, is the timeframe that is set by your TRIM calendar, and we have a problem with that.
That's not, that's not the issue, the issue is that, unfortunately, I believe, you know, we have a family.
Trip.
Trip, that it was booked a long time ago, and I believe it was during that time, and I'm sorry.
And we have no, yeah, and we have no control over when the county sets theirs, they don't check with cities or the school board, so we're kind of locked in here. There's really no window.
The last week of August?
No, you can't.
You can't?
No. No.
Okay, can we?
The only thing that I can suggest is that we, give me one second, so that I can count.
Can we take a recess on this item? The commissioner just walked out, and I, you know.
Sure.
Let's take a five, let's take a five-minute break.
Okay.
The last item in my report is the West Miami Police Department. Chief, if you want to talk a little bit, very briefly about this one, it involves one of your officers and a, an award to the City of West Miami, and I think it would be fitting for the chief to present you with the good news.
And I just received a text from the captain that they just gave Officer Bello the award right now, the dinner started at like 8:00 or 8:30.
That, no, that's, that's another, the other award. Yes.
We participate annually, and the Department of Transportation has a traffic challenge in which they gather statistics, traffic tickets, the number of reduction in vehicle crashes, as well as seat belt enforcement and so forth, and we compete against municipalities with officers of the same or similar size. And this year, we were selected, and we received a second place for departments of our size, and that, with that, we received a $12,000 credit to purchase traffic-related equipment and vehicle equipment and so forth on the DOT website. It reflects on all the, all the offices in the department, because it takes into account their traffic enforcement duties and the efforts they do. However, it was Officer Fernandez, Frank Fernandez, our traffic officer, who coordinated tentative budget hearing. We cannot advertise in the Miami Herald at that point. You need to select either the 8th or the 9th.
And the 8th worked for me?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Monday, the 8th.
Okay.
September.
Okay, so that's the date?
Monday, the 8th.
Okay.
At 7:30 PM? At 7:30 PM? Is that a good time, Mr. Mayor?
Same, same time.
Okay.
We'll send you a calendar, Commissioner Suarez.
7:30.
What's the next day?
The next day would be on the 17th, which falls on a regular city commission day. What we could do is keep that agenda as light as possible, and then, obviously, you announce an agenda for a regular commission meeting and your final budget hearing, a public hearing notice on that.
Okay.
On the 17th. Yes.
On the final?
17th, September 17th.
Okay. I missed something. We have tentative?
Tentative budget hearing, September 8th, Monday night, 2014, at 7:30, and the final budget hearing, September 17th, 2014, at 7:30 PM. The preliminary is your next meeting, on the 16th of July. That's only the manager's submittal. As we get closer, then, we start really tweaking the numbers in the month of August.
Okay. Anything else on that item?
No, sir.
Okay. Do we go back to item L and M at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Are we ready?
Item L and M, taken from the table.
Okay, coming back from the recess, what's the outcome?
Mr. Yellos.
Mr. Yellos.
I spoke to the broker, right? That, I'm sorry? That negotiated with the title company, that apparently had been negotiating with the title, with the two insurance, the two mortgage companies. And she tells me that the deadline is really actually the 22nd of July, and, of course, they want to save money for the purchaser, because there is a cost on...
Can you come over?
Just tell me the word. You're talking about the cost going up because of what?
The cost going up is going to be because of the pro rates.
Oh, yes, I understand. They had an issue with proration of costs. Of course, you have 365 days a year, if you have to prorate it, the taxes and whatever, and the interest that will go up from the 8th to the 22nd for those number of days. In other words, you have 20 days that they would have to pay in addition because of the proration of the issues. But other than that, I don't have any other recommendation, because, as I was explaining to them, we have had in the past issues whereby we have advised the requesters that are asking for mitigation, that they have to pay a certain percentage that fluctuates from 10% to 15%. That if we vary it, we have to be consistent, though I was hearing Commissioner Blanis, and I understand what he means. However, we have to be conscious of the fact that we have in the past done that. The lady offered, what is your name, I'm sorry?
My name is Maggie.
Maggie? Maggie what?
Alvarez.
Maggie Alvarez was saying that perhaps we could accept some sort of negotiation, and the gentleman would agree that if the property is not completely free of violations in, let's say, a given time. How long do you think, sir, that would take you to fix the property? Let's say, he says 90 days. Let's say that we give him 120 days to be safe, that if that property is not fixed and free of violations, within that time, that the fine would revert back to the original fine, which is $55,000.
$53,000 and change.
$53,490. You understand?
Does he understand?
Right, but how does that resolve the issue of the monies at hand that we're talking about? Because the last comment, the last comment we had was, we had a recommendation from staff that we're not even clear that even the 10%, which is, in this case, not 55, 53, $5,300, it might not even cover. So how does that, go ahead.
I have a suggestion, and, you know, the manager brought up the fact that, you know, every case that comes here is different, and that we cannot be rigid to the point that we have been possibly in the past, that, you know, we were dogmatic, close-minded about just sticking with 10%, 15%, 12% or whatever, or 8%. You know, every case should be weighed on its merit. We've had other people here that have, what their plan is, to buy the house, fix it, and sell it, and make a profit. In this case, this gentleman is coming before us, and he said it's going to be his homestead. He is going to buy the house, he's going to fix it, and he's going to live in it. So he has a, as they say, skin in the game, you know, he, you know, he's, I'm sure if he's going to live there, he's going to want to fix it and fix it really nice. And from what I understand, the house needs a lot of work, and, you know, we have to consider, you know, how that house, how that property is affecting the quality of life of the residents there. You know, our job is to make sure that the residents of West Miami have a good quality of life. And if we don't, you know, come up with a solution now, you know, where it's acceptable to him, you know, it might take, you know, another seven, eight, nine months, you know, or maybe even longer, of having this property in, you know, disarray the way that it is. So, I'm going to propose this, you know, I don't know if it's going to be okay with the gentleman, but just to get, you know, the matter, you know, resolved, I know that maybe possibly we will not cover, you know, all our expense and time, but we have to consider that he's going to fix the property, and he is going to improve it to where, you know, it's not going to, you know, take away from the quality of life of the residents like it's doing now. So what I propose is, you know, $6,500, including the water and the electric.
The electric is not our concern.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The water, sewer, and the garbage.
Sewer, okay, so $6,500, including everything. I don't know if that's palatable for him. We have to consider, you know, that the residents in that area are, you know, are going to be relieved that someone is going to come in and is going to fix that property. You know, they won't have to look at that property the way it is anymore. So, you know.
And hopefully, the outcome will be to put it on the tax rolls with a greater amount.
Caveat now, as the attorney said, if he's willing to accept the $6,500, and that's okay with him, he will need to fix the property within the 90 days of the specified period of time, and if he doesn't, it will revert, revert back to the $53,000 to the original, to the original fine, correct, Mr. Attorney?
That is correct, however, let me put it this way. The person, actually, he has no standing to request mitigation, because he's only a buyer. The owner, which I think is present, is the one that has to request him a litigation. In other words, nobody can come here and speak on behalf of the owner, it has to be the owner that is requesting this. You understand? So, he's the one that has to come here and say, "I'm selling the house, and I'd like to mitigate it," and they have to agree that if this house is not fixed within that period of time, it will revert back to the original amount.
Does he understand that?
Okay.
Does he understand that? Can you come up? Just for the record, you know, state your name and your address.
Ricardo Costa, 2843 Southwest 34th Avenue, Miami, Florida. I do understand what the panel or what's happening tonight, what everybody's saying, and I agree. I agree with the terms, whatever is feasible in order to get this across tonight.
Before you make a motion, if...
Do you understand?
Yes, I understand.
My proposal is $6,500, $6,500, and that will include the garbage and the sewer, the water. But again, if the house is not fixed within the specified period of time, which is 90 days, or whatever, I'm not sure. Mr. Attorney, is it 90 days? Supposedly, they have to fix the house to bring it up to code?
That's right.
The proposed was 120, but anyway, by the attorney. But, no? Well, let me ask a question, because I don't want to forget about this question. There was a conversation about being able to lean the bank for the utility. Is that still on the table, or is it possible, not doable?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I have not seen the chain of title, so I don't know who came first. I know that liens for services like water and sewer and the like are superior in dignity to any mortgage. So, we could, in fact, do that. If the mortgage, if the fine came after the registration of the mortgage, we would be wiped out, as far as the court enforcement is concerned, but not as far as the water lien. However, my understanding is from Mr. Penna, that this house in such disrepair, that it might be a possibility of declaring that a nuisance, and at some point, tear the house down, and lean the property for an additional expense. But you're talking into major issues now, you know?
My manager.
Thank you, and I understand we have the buyer and the seller present here this evening, and this question would be to them through you, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, is there anything that can be done so that the buyer and the seller can bring some money, both of them, to the table and try to mitigate these liens? Because, obviously, you know, things have changed since we last spoke to the legal representative, the title company, Venetian. They were supposed to assume the utilities, which would have, you know, made easier the settlement on the mitigation, on the code enforcement fines. So, my question to them is, would there be an opportunity for the seller and the buyer to both come up with an amount of money that would be equal to or a little bit greater? And again, the city wants this property back on the market, but in this case, again, all merits considered, the city's losing out on the administrative time spent on this file and the legal time spent on this.
Not only that, Mr. Mayor, the problem...
Hold on a second, I have a greater concern. I'm sorry. There's something that was said by the city attorney that I need to check with Mr. Penna, and it's talking about the condition of the house. It's, and something about demolition, so are we talking about unsafe, possible unsafe structure, or?
We would have to get our building inspector in there, but yes, it's possible.
Okay.
See, here's the thing, Mr. Mayor. The gentleman that is buying, he advised me that it's going to be a cash deal, correct, sir? So, I don't think that he would be, I mean, foolish enough as to dish out $175,000 or so and just walk out. I would assume that the great weight of the evidence tells me that most likely than not, he would want to resolve all the issues, okay?
That changes, as you introduce evidence to, that waves a lot.
Okay, but the issue, the issue is that, number one, we have been in the past been telling, I mean, and I have been advising you, of course, you, you're the ultimate authority on that, that we have to be consistent, you know, taking in consideration the each case and whatever. And I did promise at some point, trying to upgrade our court enforcement fines, but as you can see, I have not been able to, because there have been a lot of work thrown my side. So at some point, we will set down a chart whereby you will be obligated to say, if you leave that property 120 days, you will be eligible to have a mitigation of 15% or 20% or whatever, depending on how much you have ignored rules and regulations and ordinances. Now, the issue that we have at hand is, do we want that property to be back on the market? Yes. Do we want to assist the gentleman to do that? Yes. But do we want also to maintain some sort of perception that someone has not had the same deal as we have offered a particular person? It's also to be taken in consideration.
Yes. Direct to the point. The Vice Mayor Blanis, his motion, or his idea, is, can you please come over here? Vice Mayor Blanis's motion is $5,500 total.
$6,500.
I mean, 50, 55, 5,500, right?
Six, six.
5,600 total.
$6,500.
Or 65? Oh, I thought it was five.
To include the garbage.
Including the water.
The garbage.
And the garbage. The total amount, 6,500, including garbage and water. Now, your owner, are you, are you willing to come with that money?
I don't have that money.
You don't have the money?
No, no, sir.
So we have no deal? He's the owner.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Commissioner.
Okay.
Go ahead. Mr. Attorney, yes.
I'm repeating what you talked before.
Okay, Commissioner.
He has the right...
I'm sorry, city attorney, go ahead.
He has, we cannot have a third party come to you and say, "I want a mitigation on that house over there."
Right.
The owner has to come out and say, "I want a mitigation on the house over there." And the buyer can come and say, sign an agreement with us and say, "I will purchase the home, and within 90 days, I will fix the home. If I don't fix the home, the deal is that it goes back to $53,000." So what you lose in that negotiation is 90 days. You understand? If he doesn't come back in 90 days with a fixed home, then you can go back to $53,000.
Okay.
Or he can come out and say, "I'd like to have a 30-day extension," and you can grant it if you want to.
May I?
Yes.
So in this case, the owner doesn't have the $6,600?
$6,500.
Six, five.
Six, five, six, six. 6,500. The owner do not have the 6,500. The proposed buyer, do you have the 6,500? Do you, do you have the 6,500? Are you willing to make an, Mr. Yellos, can you? Are you, no, because I need you get involved in this?
Yes, sir.
And the buyer don't, the seller do not have the 6,500, but the buyer, he does have the 6,500.
I know, that's right.
Can you do the agreement with the city?
Yes, I pay, I have the money for pay.
Okay, so we have a deal, okay? What we have to do, according with your words, prepare the agreement between the future buyer and the city that is willing to pay the $6,500, and give you 90 days to put the house in order, that's it?
And if they do not, and if they do not, it reverses back to the...
I know, well, but that's the deal.
Okay, okay, we need a motion.
Put in writing, and that's it.
Okay, let's keep this in order. I need a mo, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, one thing.
Yes.
In effecting that deal, going with that deal, the city is still going to lose, because the city manager said our admin expense was fifty, was five thousand, five hundred.
That is correct.
So, out of the sixty-five, after we, after the water and garbage is paid, that means the city is going to get three thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. So, we're slightly losing.
Yes.
On this. Just want to make sure everyone understands.
In this case, yes.
In this case, I want to be sure everybody understands, okay?
Right.
But before, before we motion, I'll tell you my opinion.
Perfect, okay.
My opinion is the following. If this doesn't happen, the house will stay the way it is, and the neighbors will be suffering for whatever is happening. Make your motion, please.
The house is in great disarray. I mean, the house probably, you know, affects...
We know that.
Motion.
And that's my contention.
Your motion, sixty-five hundred dollars, including total, and you're willing to pay that, and making a agreement with the city?
Including utility?
Yes.
It's sixty-five hundred, including utility.
Six thousand, five hundred dollars.
And you have the money for that, and that's your proposal?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
With a, with a condition that if they do not fix the house within ninety days, the original fine will revert back to the original.
You do understand that, right?
To fifty-three thousand dollars.
The situation reversed to the first day. Okay. Second.
Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes.
Four-zero, item passes.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations.
Where do we sit in West Miami?
Thank you.
Just a minute. When are we expecting to get the payment offered?
Well, that's important.
When do we get the money? When are you willing to pay the sixty-five thousand?
Sixty-five hundred.
Sixty-five hundred dollars. You want to go on to the...
Yes, the closing day.
The closing day is...
Which day?
July eighth.
July eighth.
July eighth.
Remember, if you don't come July eighth with the money, we'll be no deal.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay? You have ninety days to put the house in first class.
Okay. Thank you.
We have to do, but you have to.
Fix the house nice.
Okay.
Beautiful, beautiful.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to the City of West Miami. Can we go back to the, whatever happens to be the order of the agenda? Okay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, let's see.
The nutrition agreement.
Yes.
No, we got a long way.
Item eleven C would be the next item. Recommendation to award the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen independent contract agreement to the West Miami Community Center Nutritionist, dietitian, to Dr. Lourdes Martinez, by the officer of the city manager.
Thank you very briefly, Mr. Mayor. The contracts have to be in line with our budgetary provisions. This contract would basically dictate the, the way that the food is prepared, how the food is served, the food temperatures for your congregate and home-delivered meals. We have an excellent working relationship with Dr. Lourdes Martinez. She is obviously very well in sync with the policies and procedures. We've incorporated her rate of pay into the budget numbers, and so we also recommend that you approve this contract with a commencement date of October first through September two thousand, September thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen.
Motion.
Second. Okay, now, we haven't read the resolution.
Oh, you got a first and a second.
Yes, item D, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to execute the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen independent contractor agreement with Dr. Lourdes Martinez for the services in connection with the City of West Miami Community Center Nutrition Dietitian Services as required by the Alliance for Aging and Department of Health Affairs, providing for inclusion in the proposed two thousand and fourteen, fifteen community center budget, provided for effective date. Motion by Vice Mayor Blanes, second by Commissioner Suarez.
The other way around.
It was, the motion was by Blanes, by Suarez?
By Commissioner Suarez.
Yes, I'm here, indeed. So, on the motion, Commissioner Rodriguez, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes.
Four-zero, item passes.
Item E?
Item E, request for proclamation to Police Officer Manuel Bello, City of West Miami Police Department. He was selected by the Florida Police Chiefs Association as Officer of the Year. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Blanca, which she was excused this evening by maybe the...
She asked, Mr. Mayor, if I may jump in, Commissioner Blanca asked that we do not detain this request. Officer Bello is being issued his award this evening, as you heard from the chief, and so she would like to recognize Officer Bello at the next commission meeting. So, if you approve this, it will allow us to order a plaque for him.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Next item?
Next item would be item H, report of the Director of Public Works in reference to the replacements of nineteen ninety-four Ford F-150 assigned to the City of West Miami Recreation Center by Director of Public Works.
Mr. Penner?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners. As you know, we replaced two other vehicles in prior meetings, and we have one left, and that one left, we thought that we could hold out till next year to replace it, but it's actually getting worse. So, rather than put more money into a bad vehicle, we have recent sale of the two pieces of equipment, three pieces of equipment you declare surplus, and we made very well, I believe, over seventeen thousand dollars on those three pieces of equipment, so we wish to buy the third pickup truck with that, with proceeds from that sale.
I, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I believe this item deals with the replacement of the recreation center.
No, the, well...
Correct?
I thought she read the...
Yes, this is the recreation center.
This is the one replacing Jim's pickup.
Okay, this one's coming out of the recreation impact fee.
Yes.
And that's a nineteen ninety-four Ford F-150 that we bought from the county years ago. Again, it's not a reliable truck. Every time they need a vehicle, they have to come up here and grab one of ours to go out of the city, because every time they've gone out, we've had to tow them back.
Mr. Director, it was about time you changed that truck from Jim, because Jim was in the junk. He was driving it.
Mr. Commissioner?
It was junk around the city.
You give me the money, I'll replace them all.
No, no, no. I think it's a very good idea.
Can you read the resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, resolution of the mayor, item A, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of, from Don Ray Ford, of one unit half-ton pickup truck for, by two, to be used as replacement vehicle for the total amount of fourteen thousand, nine hundred, ninety-nine dollars and zero cents, utilizing impact fee funds devoted to parks, providing for effective date, mayor and city commission.
Motion.
And that's from the Florida Sheriff's bid.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes.
Four-zero, item passes.
Item N, and can you read item O, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item N is a report by Director of Public Works in reference to Public Works equipment replacement and recommendation for replacement of same. And item O is a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of a two thousand and fourteen Ford F-150 pickup truck to replace vehicle number six for a nineteen ninety-six Ford F-150 truck from Don Ray Ford for the amount of fourteen thousand, nine hundred, ninety dollars to be funded from the proceeds of the sale of the surplus vehicle sold on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, by mayor and city commission.
This is the one that we're going to buy from the proceeds of the surplus sale, and that will replace all of our pickup trucks.
Motion. Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes.
Four-zero, item passes.
Good to the order. Anybody for the good to the order? Motion to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good night.